AM, October 2nd, 3rd, 2nd, 2019. We'll call this meeting of the Fergus Falls City Council Committee to hold to order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 We have a call. First item of business this morning is a discussion item on an encroachment agreement, and I will call on Ryan Miller.
Good morning, Your Honor. Yes, the first item on the agenda is a request to enter into an encroachment agreement presented by the property owner of 533 Channing Avenue West. The property owner is requesting authorization to enter into negotiations for an encroachment agreement for a shed of the property owner's, which is located within the city right-of-way on the front of Calvin Street. The property is located in the corner of Calvin and Channing. The shed is located almost entirely within the city right-of-way, outside of the city property lot boundary. It's been there for quite a bit of time, but was noticed to be within the city right-of-way during the review of a building permit that was filed and approved for the reconstruction of a detached garage on the property back in around this time last year, October 2018. The building permit was for the reconstruction of that detached garage. It was paid for, approved, and completed. The work has been done. And on the building permit, there was a comment on there that the shed was identified to be within the right-of-way and should be moved. Since the work on the detached garage was done, the shed has not been moved. So, the last few months, the city staff has been in contact with the property owner to discuss various options. And one option that was discussed was the ability to approach the council and request to enter into negotiations for an encroachment agreement. So, we've looked into this, and we have the property owner here this morning. You know, based off of the fact that it's entirely within the city right-of-way, staff is proposing or recommending not to enter into negotiations or encroachment agreement. But if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, or if you would like to ask any questions of the property owner who's here as well.
Sure. So, we'll let Mr. Cornell talk in a minute. I had one question for staff. So, you said that you identified or looked at different options, and one would be an encroachment. Were there other options that... Is it pretty much cut and dry? It's either an encroachment agreement, or the shed does not remain?
Right. So, we talked about your number of different options. Staff, you know, suggested moving it on to the property within all the required setbacks. The property owner asked, you know, if it was possible to move it into the unimproved alleyway behind the home, because there's no alleyway in that public right-of-way between the homes. But that's a permanent utility easement, so it wouldn't be able to locate there either. So, the only other option was this encroachment agreement avenue. So, that's where we're at now. And then, I do have a map up here showing the property. So, the purple outline is the city right-of-way, which on this lot does match up with the property boundaries. The shed is on the lower left-hand corner. You can see it's almost entirely outside of the property boundaries and within the right-of-way.
Thanks, Ryan. Any questions, Ryan? Otherwise, Mr. Cornell, would you like to...
Yes.
Your Honor. Ryan, can I ask, was the garage an increase in size from the existing garage that was there?
It went from a single to a double.
Thank you.
Sure. Yeah, we increased the garage from a single to a double. We had purchased the property in 2017. I have just some images, as well as some documents from the county. I'm sorry, I don't have enough of those. I think there's six of them there. So... And first of all, as I begin, I just want to say, working with Ryan and the other couple of city employees that I had contact, I had more with Ryan than anybody else, certainly was a good experience. They were very professional in what they did, and I'm grateful for that. So, I don't dispute that I agreed to move the shed when we built the garage. I was not aware at the time that I had the option of requesting a variance or an encroachment. I've never been in this position before. So, this is a new experience for me. As you can see from the document provided in... From the county, the shed was put in place back in 2000. We purchased the home in July of 2017. In 2007, a deck was added to the front of the home, and certainly a permit and inspection would have been done at that time. Apparently, nothing was said about the shed at that time by the city. In 2012, a deck in the back of the home and a fence were added to the back of the home. Again, I would guess that a permit would have been required for that, and inspection would have been done for that deck and that fence, and nothing was said about it at that time. The trees along the boulevard on Calvin, which were planted by the city, are roughly eight to 12 years old. I visited with Nature's Garden World to try to estimate the age of those trees without cutting any of them down, which I'm sure nobody would have wanted done. I'm sure you'd be able to provide the exact date those trees were put in, and certainly, again, I would think the city would have noticed the shed at that time and said something if it were an issue. And based on the placement of those trees on the boulevard, there will likely never be a sidewalk that runs from Calvin to... Or from Channing to Douglas. That is one of the only reasons I could think of the city would be concerned about the shed. And also, basement... On the placement of the other tree, the spacings of the other trees, it appears as though a tree likely should have been placed directly to the west of the shed for balance and aesthetic purposes. From my perspective, it appears as though the city gave tacit approval to the placement of the shed, because nothing was apparently said about it at that time. And in visiting with Ryan Miller in preparation for today, I asked him, is it likely that if we hadn't changed our single garage to a double garage, this wouldn't be an issue? This is a paraphrase of what Ryan said to me, but he said, well, we'll never really know. Oftentimes, we find out about these things from neighbors who alert us to an issue, or a city employee drives by and makes us aware of the issue. Apparently, for 18 years, no neighbor made an issue of this, and either no city person drove by our home or saw the shed as an issue for 18 years. I'm not even the person who put the shed where it is. When we purchased the home, why was nothing done within the sale process to make the previous owner or us aware that the shed was an issue? I believe that the city's had ample time and opportunity to make that shed an issue over the last 18 years. It hasn't been made an issue, and therefore, I request that the city approve a variance or an encroachment, whatever the appropriate term is. And my hope is that a little common sense can be applied in this decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cornell. Any members of the council have questions? Mr. Cornell?
Brent. On the bottom of the permit, it does say right there in the corner, the shed must be moved. When did you decide you were going to take care of this? Because, I mean, as long as it's taken for that garage to be built, is it something you've been dealing with from the day you got the permit? Or is it something now where the garage is built and you don't want to move it?
Well, I will admit it, the garage is built and I don't want to move it. I didn't know, when I agreed to move the shed, that I had an option, as I said at the beginning. I didn't know that I had an option.
And the shed's not on a permanent foundation, obviously, right? It's just a... Correct. And one other question. Ryan mentioned the utility easement in the back... There's a utility easement through the alley in the back of the house. Is that correct?
That's correct. There's power lines running through the alleyway.
Oh, okay.
So, for maintenance and...
Sure.
Even for the power lines. I spoke with our engineering department, and we typically don't allow any structure within any utility easements either for the need to get to them for repairs and maintenance.
Sure.
Just one clarification. Mr. Cornell mentioned the encroachment agreement or the variance. So, we would only be able to discuss an encroachment agreement here, because the shed is entirely off of the property. A variance only is if it were on the property, but within a setback. So, the variance option's not an option unless it was moved back onto the property, but within the setback. But for it to remain where it is, it's entirely outside, and it would have to be an encroachment agreement.
Your Honor, is there... I mean, how much of an issue really is it to just move the shed to the east and put it within the property? Obviously, I mean, one of the big issues is that none of the shed sits within your own property.
Well, right... Just directly to the east, I mean, literally right to it, is we have raspberry bushes in a garden. And again, those have been there. I mean, again, we purchased the home in 2017, July 2017. So, I can only... I mean, that was all there when we purchased the home. So, can it be moved? Yes. Is it a huge inconvenience? Yes.
What are the wishes of the council?
I think one of the issues, to a certain extent, is the fact that you agreed to remove it. I mean, I think it's more, you know, about moving it more than it is necessarily removing it. And, you know, I would say, you know, is it not possible to look at putting it in kind of like the southeast corner of the garden if there's raspberry bushes behind it, if you don't want to remove the raspberry bushes?
It's sloped back there, and it's a... It would be a bigger challenge to move it back into that area.
My concern, as much as anything, is you set a precedence.
Ben?
Scott? I've driven by there and took a look at this, and I think that what is likely is that it opens up a bigger question that we looked at a couple of months ago, when April was asking us about the parking of campers and boats and things like that that are out on an area like this. And, you know, as it happens in this particular neighborhood, just one block up the street to the north, there's a camper that's basically in the same situation. You know, it's right out there within the city's right-of-way. And, you know, it's clearly been parked there for a while, too. And you'll find instances of things like this hollow of town. You know, April showed us those pictures. You know, this isn't something on wheels like a camper or a boat, and yet it has the same effect of something that's parked out in a place where we haven't shown that we're going to enforce any ordinances really consistently on that. That's what April was bringing up to us here a couple of months ago. In this particular case, I don't... You know, the neighbors aren't raising any issue, and I don't see why we would need to make any issue of it. Once the time comes that we start to enforce the things that April was bringing forward a couple of months ago, then I could see where something like this might be brought in by somebody who was being asked to move their, you know, whatever, because here's something that is kind of in the same category. But I guess in this specific case, I'd be inclined to let it be, because it doesn't seem to have been bothering anybody, and it doesn't show any... I don't see any reason why it would.
Thanks, Scott. So, yeah.
Has this been before the planning commission? And, I mean, the one thing is, if, I mean, if we give an encroachment, then, I mean, then it sits there forever. And so, I mean, once... If we agree to an encroachment, then, Ryan, if I'm right in saying that, then, I mean, it's by legal requirement or legal position is that that shed can stay there forever and ever and ever?
I'm not certain, but I think you could put it in terms within the agreement that it could be in place for X number of years. It's a legal document, but I think that can be written into it. I mean, just one other note. Yes, Councilmember Kwame mentioned the, you know, connection to the boats and trailers. And so, there is a city code that is related to accessory structures, and they cannot be located within the front or side yards of a property. Since this is a corner lot, it would... Its location, if it were just to the east on the property, would be considered in the front yard. So, that's another element at play, is that it's located in a front yard, which is not allowed per city code.
Just for my clarification, can I ask? So, you're saying this shed is considered on my front yard? Is that... Did I understand what you just said?
Yes. So, for a corner... For a property on a corner lot, there are two front yards. Most lots will have a front yard on the street that it's built on, and then side yards on the other side in the backyard. On a corner lot, the home has two front yards, so front setbacks apply to both fronting streets. So, there's a front setback required along Calvin Street, and a front setback required along Channing Avenue. So, it's... It'd be a 30-foot setback from both streets for accessory structures. I believe the garage was allowed as it had been in place for so long.
Sure. Thanks. So, there's a encroachment request, agreement request. We should make a motion to the council, one way or the other. So, who would like to make a motion?
Has it been in front of the planning commission? I mean, does it have...
It has not been in front of the planning commission. This was the first review.
I think for me personally, I'd like it to go back to the planning commission for their input.
You want to make that motion?
I would make that motion.
Okay.
I would second it.
Motion is to send this to the planning commission. Any other questions, comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion carries. Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, Mr. Cornell.
Can you tell me what that means, then?
So, the planning commission will meet next Monday...
October 14th.
October 14th?
Will be the first...
At 5:00 here in the council chambers, and they'll take up the matter.
And is that something that I should be...
Yes.
Okay.
Is it 5:30, Ryan?
It is 5:30, Monday, October 14th, and you are welcome to attend.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item is a discussion about combining polling places. We'll call on Lynn Olson. Good morning, Lynn.
Good morning. In 2020, the state has added a presidential primary election, so that means we have three elections within the state here next year. And recruiting judges has been one of our most interesting challenges. But then you throw unpredictable weather. A lot of our judges are snowbirds. We've had pretty low turnout in our primary elections. 2012, we only had 4% of our voters come out. 2018, we had a lot higher, 26%, but that was with a local interest race with the sheriff. So, we typically see low voter turnout. Did some searching with Wayne Stein, and we do have the ability through a Minnesota statute that we combine polling places, which we're recommending that we do for both the presidential primary in March and the regular primary in August. And then, we would keep everything big and open for November, when we have a lot bigger of a turnout. It's going to help us make our elections process more efficient, more affordable, fewer judges to recruit. Really nervous about the weather in March. It's unpredictable, so if bad weather comes in and judges feel like they need to leave to be safe, it's just less people to have to deal with. So, what I'm asking for is your blessing that we pass a resolution on Monday night that we would combine polling places for the March and August elections next year, and that we would keep our November election as the normal number of precincts.
So, Lynn, is that combined into one location?
No, we can't combine into one location, because we have too many voters that are registered within the city. So, we'd still have our four polling places, which, again, are Ward 1, the library, Ward 2, the YMCA community room, Ward 3 is M-State, and Ward 4 is the Bigwood Event Center. So, we would have those four locations, but instead of having... We won't get, and there's a precinct here and a precinct there. It's just one precinct. That's what we're looking for.
Thanks, Lynn. Any questions? Someone like to make that motion?
All for that. I've got one question that's not specific to this per se, probably, but the area of Woodland Heights, when that got addressed, is that going to be affected in any way in this particular round of elections?
We've already combined Woodland Heights with another... We technically have nine precincts. We've already combined Woodland Heights with another precinct in Ward 2, so that we won't have to staff that...
A third one there.
Yeah. That one was... But the amount of judges that are needed for the amount of voters that are there, that did not work out so great budget-wise for us, but... And that will all be changing again after the census next year. All of our redistricting will be happening as well.
Thanks, Lynn. Someone make that motion justice?
All for your honor.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Carolyn, thanks. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion carries. Item number three is a Lakes Country Service Cooperative nomination. I'll call on city administrator Andrew Bremse.
Thank you, Your Honor, members. Members, good morning. As you all know, Councilmember Fish currently serves on the Lakes Country Service Cooperative Board of Directors, and his term is expiring. So, and if we wish for him to continue, and he has indicated that he wishes to continue, we need to pass a resolution nominating Mr. Fish for that position. There is a sample resolution within your packet. It's pretty straightforward. There are three individuals with their terms expiring, and I believe all three are going to try to continue. So, what we need to do is recommend to the council this resolution to nominate Jim Fish to the Lakes Country Service Cooperative Board of Directors.
Thanks, Andrew. I know it's something you've done for quite some time, and you enjoy it and you want to continue.
Also, I'm... From that board, I'm on the Minnesota Healthcare Consortium, of which I'm treasurer. So, that's what's helped keep our rates down.
Sure. Thanks for your service there, Jim. Would someone like to offer that resolution to the council?
I'll second it, Your Honor.
Thanks, Brent. Justin, all in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion carries. Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Item number four is a Greater Fergus Falls contract agreement. Again, I'll call on Andrew Bremse.
Thank you, Your Honor, members. As you all recall, the city council asked us to come back with some language, cleaning up the contract a little bit with Greater Fergus Falls and the city of Fergus Falls. This is something we've done a lot of with a lot of our agreements over the last couple of months and years. And so, nothing out of the ordinary here, just wanting to clarify a few pieces of language. And there is a example on your desks this morning. That was the latest version, so to speak, and I think a version that's acceptable to both Greater Fergus Falls and the city. So, I'll direct your attention to number 10 on that sheet, "Commitment to Continue Operations." The proposed language should read, "Greater Fergus Falls shall continue its operations and maintain an office which shall be open to the public during normal business hours within the city during the term of the agreement. If Greater Fergus Falls fails to maintain an office located within the city, this agreement shall terminate." That simple, that straightforward. And then, one other change within the agreement itself is going from paying the $50,000 that we attribute to the organization at the beginning of the year, instead paying it quarterly going forward. So, just a rather simple change there. Both of these are fairly straightforward and not real consequential with the way things are operating now. Things are good, and the relationship between the two organizations is strong, and there's a lot of work being done. So, I don't know if there's any questions, but that's the recommendation to amend the contract with those changes that I highlighted, and I think that puts the contract in a pretty good place.
Any questions?
Well, it's pretty straightforward. I make that recommendation, Your Honor.
Thank you, Anthony.
I'll second it.
Thanks, Jim. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion carries. Item number five is a welfare fraud mutual aid agreement. I'll call on our chief of public safety, Kyle Berger. Morning, Kyle.
Morning. Thank you, Your Honor. In your packet, you should have received a copy of a mutual aid agreement between the city of Fergus Falls and Otter Tail County. This mutual aid agreement is to provide a halftime investigator to provide welfare fraud investigations throughout all of Otter Tail County. Currently, there are two civilian investigators employed by the Otter Tail County Attorney's Office. One of them is retiring, and that there is a wish through the county attorney's office to have a licensed peace officer as part of that team. Otter Tail County has agreed to reimburse the city or contract with the city for those services. And we did look at real costs associated with that particular investigator, and that cost would be about $58,000 annually. There was some discussion that potentially this could become a full-time position, but I think for the first year or so, I think halftime is probably the most prudent route for us to take, and then we'll explore adding additional hours as we go forward.
Thanks, Scott. So, just for my clarification, you mentioned that there's a civilian investigator currently operating in this role?
There's two that are employed with Otter Tail County. One of those is going to be retiring.
Okay.
And so, it was their desire to add a licensed person in that position.
Okay. I understand. So, it's... The position exists, it's just...
Yes.
Changing the qualifications.
I have a question. Why city and not county? Why not a sheriff?
Sure. You know, we did discuss that, and the county attorney's office did talk with the sheriff's office. I think it's because we do have an individual that is trained in this area, and also, obviously, has an interest in this area. And that's really what it just kind of boiled down to.
Thank you.
Someone like to make that recommendation to the council?
I'll make that recommendation.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Krista, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion carries. Thanks, chief. Item number six is a loan request. It's a recommendation to the council to approve a $10,000 SAD loan. Bill, would you like to...
I sure can. I don't see anyone from the HRA.
The HRA, yeah. Good morning, Bill.
Good morning. Thank you, Your Honor. And your packet is a loan request. It's from Signs up North, and it's a $10,000 loan. This would come out of our Community Development Block Grant, our revolving loan fund. You hear us often refer to that as Fund 264. These are the loans that the intake is all done through the HRA. The loans go before the business development for Fergus Falls, and they are recommending approval of this loan to you this morning. This would be for asphalt parking lot repairs in front of their building on College Way, so behind Fleet Farm, their location there. So, $10,000, at 0% for a period of four years.
Someone like to recommend that to the council?
I'll make that recommendation, Your Honor.
Thank you, Anthony. Second?
I'll second, Your Honor.
Thanks. Justin, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, that motion carries. Thank you, Bill. Item number seven, Public Improvement 5329. It's a Highway 210 project update. Calling city engineer Brian Yvaro. Good morning, Brian.
Hey, good morning, Your Honor, and members of this council. Before you is an update in regards to MnDOT's improvement project on Trunk Highway 210. They're planning on doing this this next coming season, 2020. If you recall, it was brought to your attention that the city maintains and operates some existing utilities within MnDOT's right-of-way. If you turn to the map here on your left, you can kind of see, and you have this before you, but we... On the north side of Trunk Highway 210, we're bounded between Two Rivers Road and County Road 116. But on that north side, we have a 10-inch water main and a 6-inch sanitary force main. Component to MnDOT's project is to do some grading, some ditching along the north side of this ditch area. This is for the purpose of snow storage that MnDOT's claiming. We've reviewed this, and MnDOT's reviewed this, but they feel they have to do this to maintain it for safety reasons. However, with that ditching, grading work, it's going to require approximately about five feet of cover over our existing utilities, and that would bring them susceptible to freezing and other issues. So, interstate engineering reviewed the area. If you look on the map, we've kind of analyzed it between three sections, section 1, 2, and 3. I provided the options. Option number one that we figured, lower the tenant's water main and 6-inch sanitary sewer within all three sections, estimating total project cost about $290,000. Option 2, lower the tenant's water main and 6-inch sanitary force main within sections 1 and 2 to the west, and then insulate section 3 to the east. We're estimated at a total estimated project cost of about $262,000. As mentioned before, MnDOT, representative from MnDOT, Lori Vanderheiler, she's the project manager, will be here on Monday just to give you an overview of this project in general and what MnDOT's plan is. what MinDOT's plan is. But we are required, like I said, per the permit granted back in 1997, to address our utilities. Still working on with MinDOT to see how we're going to stage that, if we're going to incorporate it into their project, or do it as a standalone project. But I'll be presenting it back to the council in the near future here with a design proposal.
Thank you. Thank you, Brian.
I have a quick question.
Questions? Yeah, Jim?
Is this whole thing our expense, or are we reimbursed?
No, this is our expense.
Okay. Tom?
That was one of my questions, but I have another one. It's a good one. It's the best. So the section three, is lowering it more effective than insulating it?
Perhaps. We, if we did, if we did, I prefer that. I think when, if we did plans and spec-ing everything, we'd do it a combination thereof. So when we have, let's just say, when we're doing the actual work, we can analyze our heights and then make a determination if we want to insulate it or else actually just start lowering it.
Okay. Yeah, because if that option is more effective and we pay, you know, $30,000 extra, it seems like, you know, the first time something breaks out there, we're going to eat into that.
Well, most definitely. The other two things is, these two utilities are the primary service conduits for the Two Rivers Road area. So just thinking about the constructibility, we would have to install these new lines if we lowered them, kind of perhaps paralleling the existing, so we can maintain service and just have a minor service interruption once we connect them over.
Okay.
But that's still to be determined at this time.
Okay. Thank you. Scott?
This is probably not going to be our problem, but I noticed that the lines extend up into the parking lot for Life Church there, and the plan that would involve opening this up or widening or deepening things, how does it affect that parking lot? I would guess they would be curious to know.
There's service lines that go into that parking lot. I'm not sure the utilities, the utilities, mainline utilities are paralleling.
Maybe the question is more what MinDOT's planning to do. Either widen or deepen the ditch, is it going to cause them to have to redo their parking lot? That's the...
That'd be a question for them. I'm not entirely sure on that aspect on them, but yeah, I believe in some areas, you know, they're going up to five feet deeper and actually wider. So I'm assuming they've been in contact with that property owner, and they negotiated some type of restitution, however that may be.
Jim? I feel as long as we're doing it, let's dig it down and get it done right, right away. Spend the extra money. It's only $28,000.
How many?
Done right in the first place.
Yeah, especially after the last winter we had. We don't know how deep that frost is going to go.
Yep.
Any other comments?
I got one dumb question. If we're going to be doing it, I agree, go down deep, but would we also want to insulate it too, being that we're going to have it all torn up, or is that kind of cost prohibitive?
No, if we go to our standard barrier of about nine, nine and a half feet, that's very adequate frost protection.
Very good. Thanks.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you. Brian?
Mm-hmm.
Item number eight is the Burlington Avenue Street Utility Improvement Project, and again, we'll call on Brian Evaro.
Yes, thank you. Just wanted to give you an update. Our 2019 street improvement project, Public Improvement 5954, is reaching substantial completion. The curb and gutter, sidewalks, aggregate road sections are being installed and attempts to start getting the entire city's caved. If you recall, last year when we started this project, we contemplated adding this segment of Burlington, and what's shown on the map right here is Burlington bounded by Randolph Avenue to the north and Mount Faith to the south. As we recall, this road was a concern, still is a concern, and is very deteriorated. We did not incorporate it for a few reasons, primarily accessibility and logistics. But at the time, I'm requesting that we start looking at this project. I envision this to be a reconstruction project, very similar path is what we've done on the current project being done in 2019. We did special assessed on this project through 429. That was just for a portion of the street. I envision all the utilities and everything would be covered through the enterprise funds. However, that is yet to be determined. So at this time, I'm requesting we initiate Public Improvements 5271, 7206, and 8223. And I'm requesting to combine all three of these PI numbers into CP 5953. Requesting the council order and the preliminary engineering report for 5956. This requires a supermajority. And also, I'm requesting, accepting a proposal from Patch and Messner's professional services proposal for appraisal services. They have a not-to-exceed amount of $9,000. I want to note, I've already spoken with them, and they did indicate that we could perhaps do this at a much cheaper price, perhaps amend the existing report that we did, appraisal report that we did in this current project, or just do it a standalone. So we're still trying to determine what that is, but regardless, we have to, should be getting appraisals for this type of work.
Your honor, on behalf of the drivers and residents in that area and the rims of my bike, I will offer that.
Thanks, Tom.
I said the other ones first.
Krista, any questions? Discussion?
I think you just voted down because of that. You can buy more rims.
All favor that motion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. There are no other items on the agenda this morning. Does anyone have anything they'd like to bring up?
If we have a few minutes, and if Andrew, I don't know if Guy's up to speed on it, but the council received an email from some gentleman wanting to use the Kirk bride for a wedding, and I was just wondering if Andrew or Guy could comment on what that would involve and see kind of what the, I figure we owe it to them to, you know, discuss it, and this seems like a good venue to do it.
Yeah, thank you, your honor. Council member Roofer, council members. I did get contacted by an individual who asked to use the Kirk bride for their wedding event. I did tell them that the position of the city council was not to allow the public into the facility, and as such, we would not allow for the wedding to take place. But I did say, you know, you certainly have the ability to ask council members if you don't agree with my decision. My understanding, in the brief conversation that we had enough for me to tell him no, was that they want to actually have the ceremony within the tower of the facility. And, you know, from my perspective, there's a whole host of issues with that. First of all, the precedent that that would set if we were to allow this couple or these individuals to get married there. I don't know how we would turn down others in the future. Secondly, I guess, with the quality of the air, the lack thereof within the tower, you know, I don't even go in there without a mask, and I can't imagine it would be a pleasant place to be for a wedding at this point in time until additional work is done. And I feel staff would have to almost accompany folks, because once you're in the building, you can get anywhere within the building, and as an active construction zone, I don't know the timing of this wedding. There's concerns that come along with that as well. And then finally, you know, I don't know, these individuals are not from this area, and, you know, if we are going to do things like this, I certainly would want to think about working with local folks who have asked the question in the past or who have interest before. We would extend it to folks that, you know, none of us have any awareness of or contact with. So I guess those are my two cents. The council can certainly do what they want to do with this, but I informed these individuals that we've only allowed two groups from the public, one being the local Daily Journal, which were accompanied by staff the entire time, and then the other being the Prairie Public Television Channel, which was also accompanied by staff throughout the entirety of the tour. So we've been pretty strict on what we are to allow and not to allow, and I don't see any reason to change that unless the council feels otherwise.
Would there be any reason that they couldn't do it outside, depending on what time of year they want to get hitched?
No, I mean, I certainly wouldn't have any opposition to that. I know the facility, the exterior of the facility is used heavily in wedding photography and other events, and when people reach out to ask for tours or to take pictures, we encourage them to do so on the outside of the building, avoiding the obvious construction areas and stuff if it's, you know, during an active phase of work. But, you know, there's no issue from our end, and you can reserve the park like any other, and I'm certain people do it. I know it's happened back here by in City Hall before, so I don't see any issue with that.
Okay. Thanks. Scott, did you have something?
Only to say that I think it indicates an ongoing interest in the use of the property and that we need to take a look at how we're going to make it usable for people. We've been focused on the Phase 2 demolition project, obviously, this summer, but there hasn't really been any talk or any plans laid on the table about, you know, what's next. I know that the RTC Master Plan Committee has met, and so that piece of the puzzle is rolling. But as far as any efforts on the city's part to try and address the air quality issues or anything like that, there isn't anything on the table, there isn't anything in the works for that right now. And I guess I'd like to see something get started on that soon, so that we would be able to offer this kind of opportunity to people that want to use it.
Thanks, Scott. I guess my response to that would be funding. I mean, you know, where it's going to take a lot of money to make that happen, and, you know, I think we've got, the council's laid out other priorities, and so, you know, we just have to, we can find a funding source if somebody, like I always say, if somebody shows up with a briefcase full of cash, let's see what we can do. But, you know, in the meantime, I think, you know, personally, I just don't see it as a priority. Thanks.
Just as a matter of record, I would support Andrew's kind of response that at this time, you know, we're not...
On the interior?
Yeah. I mean, you can take photographs on the outside as much as you like, but, you know, from an interior visit.
Yeah, and I would agree with that as well. I would be afraid of setting a precedent. I mean, to me, it seems like the cost in making it habitable and then providing city staff would be high, that would need to be borne by these guys, and, yeah, I just, and I don't want to set the precedent, so.
Sure.
Just wanted to hear what you guys think. Thanks.
We'll move along.
I would say that I think that Andrew handled this just fine. I don't see that there's any way that we would have had an opportunity to make this happen for this, in this case, so.
Sure. All right. Thanks. Anything else to come before? Scott?
I had sent you an email earlier. I don't know if any of the other council members were contacted, but I know that I was concerning questions regarding noise in the city and over the last month or less. And I just am not real clear on what our ordinance requirements are and what the permitting requirements are and that. I just am looking for some help on understanding what our options are.
Sure.
The two instances that were brought to my attention were the noise from the races at the I-94 racetrack, and then from the VFW concert that was late into the evening, you know, here a week or two ago. And I just frankly don't know what our permitting process is for that and how to answer those questions.
Sure. And is that something you want to address now, or do you want to bring that to Monday nights, just an update on?
I would be glad to talk about it now if everybody's got the time. All right, thank you, your honor. Council member Kwame, members. I will say this, the city ordinance does not have a time listed for when, you know, noise has to end, so I hate to say that too far and wide, but we've gone back and forth over the years, is my understanding, as to whether or not we want to actually name a time within the ordinance that people have to be quiet or cease to operate. We've always asked folks that call and ask the question to use common sense and to be courteous of neighbors. In regards to the racetrack, first of all, there is no permitting that happens with the city, because there's nothing out there that we regulate in terms of, you know, there would be in terms of liquor sales and those types of things, but the actual operation of the races, there's nothing that's permitted, so there's no real regulation, so to speak, that goes along with that or anything that the city is giving them the ability to do that they can't do under the existing ordinances in terms of racing on the track. I think we all agree that 3:30 in the morning or 4 o'clock in the morning is probably a little extreme and isn't ideal, you know, but we also, I think, have to realize it's once a year, and that race has such an economic impact for our community that, you know, we may have to overlook that. But I will say, the weather is what forced them to do that. They were in contact with us and various people on staff throughout the week, and losing a whole day of racing, they had to make up for it, and that is what led to the late nights, early mornings. So that's unfortunate, and if the weather cooperates, you know, they can get those races in in relative order, from what I understand, and would be done in time. As far as the other operation, the VFW, they have the ability under their liquor licenses and the licenses that they have to operate events like that on their facility or on their property. And quite frankly, because we don't have a time in our ordinance, they can do that during their hours of business. So they could technically go till 1 o'clock in the morning when they close, and I don't believe that they have gone, maybe they have, I don't hear the noise, but I believe that they've been courteous to try to end by 11 to midnight. I know that's late for a lot of folks, but the long story short, I guess, is that we don't have the ability to really do anything other than ask them to be courteous and to quiet down. And if we do go the route of naming a time within our ordinance, you know, 10 o'clock in the summer is much different than 10 o'clock in the winter or 11 o'clock, and if there is a time, you have to enforce the time, and it adds a lot of extra work for law enforcement. I know they do get calls today about these events, but we would have to, if there is a time in the ordinance, we would have to enforce that and be consistent with that, and that would be year-round, despite what the events were. So in that instance, there could be a variance from the council issued for noise if we had a time. I don't know if you want to go down that road. That's a whole nother host of issues when you handpick which ones can extend beyond a certain hour and which ones can't. So short of a handful of phone calls and these few events that have run a little bit long, I don't know if it's been an issue to the point of wanting to, you know, change the rules for everybody who have done fairly well of respecting the privacy of the neighbors and being courteous of what time of the evening their events go and tell. So I don't know if anybody has any other thoughts, but that's really the answer as to how it's done today and why it's done that way, so.
I would add that the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency does have actually standards on noise. I think I've got a copy of it somewhere. I'll see if I can take it out.
Sure.
I was just going to add that we actually get more phone calls about early morning events than late night events, like people starting to mow their lawn too early for their neighbors' preference and that type of thing, or construction activities too early. So that's typical, so if you're going to look at a timeframe, we get a lot more on the early morning side than the late side.
Thanks, Lynn.
And I guess I would just take the opportunity to thank the people in the area that, you know, put up with the inconvenience in order to, and, you know, were accepting of the Wasota event. And I know Gene Bowman's working on calculating the economic impact, which I think is pretty significant. And I had a discussion with a helpful constituent, with a helpful individual that called me up at 4 o'clock Saturday morning to let me know what time the race has got done. But, yeah, it, you know, it was a good event, and, yeah, just thank you to the individual or the citizens that helped make it happen, and we're okay with it. That's the kind of event that our city needs. And then I guess I would just be interested to hear if Kyle has any thoughts on the matter.
You know, I'm going back a few years, but there used to be something in our ordinance with a specific time. I don't remember off the top of my head if that was 10 or 11 p.m. And every time an establishment wanted to host an event, they would have to come before the council to have the variance. And I think it was the council at that time decided to go the other way, and I think the ordinance is now written that as long as it's on your premise during your normal business or hours of operation, that you didn't need the variance. So we've kind of, you know, come full circle over the past few years. And I, you know, I kind of agree with everybody with what's been said. I mean, I do think it is important for our community to have events and be a thriving community. I, just over the years, every single establishment that we have worked with, I think, has been very considerate and understanding. So, you know, on a one-on-one basis, if there is an issue, I think we can, you know, maybe deal with the particular businesses and just, you know, try to make it a win for everybody. I am one of those people that's usually in bed by 9 p.m., so I understand too, you know, how the music sometimes late at night can be a little bit of a nuisance, but I do think it is relatively rare. You know, I think the VF maybe has two or three events maybe throughout the year, so, you know, I think my big thing is if we can all be good neighbors to one another and be a little tolerant, I think it's in the best interest of our community as a whole.
Thanks, Kyle. Some good words to end. Anyone else?
I'm done now.
All right.[1784.26]